God and all the sickness that's going on right now everywhere too, Lord, and I just ask that you would be with us tonight, Lord, to help us make all the decisions being in the best interest of this town. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our meeting tonight. We're gonna jump right into it and start out with public hearing. And that's number five, number one. That's ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero five. Open public hearing.
I'll just read the caption. An ordinance of the town of Hilliard, Florida rezoning certain property consisting of one point two five acres, more or less, located between Ohio Street, New Front Street, County Road one oh eight, Bay Road, Hilliard, Florida. Parcel number oh eight three N twenty-four twenty-three eighty oh one eighty-two zero zero ten from R two, single family district to R three, multiple family district, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, at this time we'll call for public comment.
I have to abstain from any conversation about this. This is my sister and brother-in-law.
Oh, okay.
He's a prophet.
Ms. Connor did reach out to me. She won't be able to make it tonight. They're out of town on their anniversary.
So you know public hearing, so I'll make a motion to close public hearing? Second. Have a motion, second, to close it. And comment, question? No, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
And Kenny, I mean, abstain. Okay. Okay, direct to meeting, Town Council Action, Town Council adopting the first reading ordinance number. Final reading will be Thursday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at seven o'clock. Okay, go ahead now, open it for the audience input.
Oh, wait a minute, no, no.
Oh, yep, we gotta have both of them.
Yeah, okay.
I was asking the attorney if he could read the header again.
Oh, yeah, we should. An ordinance of the town of Hilliard, Florida rezoning certain property consisting of one point two five acres, more or less, located between Ohio Street, New Front Street, County Road one oh eight, Bay Road, Hilliard, Florida. Parcel number oh eight three N twenty-four twenty-three eighty oh one eighty-two zero zero ten from R two, single family district to R three, multiple family district, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
You need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two oh five?
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I think we need to set the hearing for the second and final reading. Lisa, do you have that date?
Yes, ma'am, it's October twentieth at seven P M.
That should be part of your most motion.
Well, this is just first reading. It automatically set up as a second. The second final reading is on October the twentieth.
Correct.
Yes, it's just usually it's part of the motion.
So moved.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Second, yeah. Any question, comment? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
I would call the board now.
Just.
I would have called the board now.
Yes.
All right, we'll call the board then. Go ahead.
Councilman Sims?
Abstain.
Councilman Pickett?
Yes.
Councilman Wallace?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bishop?
Yes.
Council President Lee.
Yes, and that's why, because of, yeah, abstain.
Oh, okay, well, yeah. But long as nothing made in notation, I mean, we don't have to, but that's all right. Okay, so, so, curious. Okay, now I'm gonna go to the audience, comment. Anyone like to speak from the audience, have anything other thoughts on the agenda? Okay, not, that's good, add number two. Additions, additions to the agenda.
I have one addition that I'd like to ask to be added to the agenda, and that is the resolution that we originally adopted, I wanna say, two meetings ago, maybe, and what it's in regards to is the grant that we are just submitting for the, for the Department of Environmental Protection, and it is the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program Grant for the North Oxford Ballpark Phase Two. In the original resolution, we had a line that needed to be removed in order for us to gain points, and the reason why it needed to be removed was because we've already done it, and so I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Motion to add.
And it's res, I'm sorry, it's Resolution two thousand twenty-two eleven.
This is an emergency item?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Yes, okay, I'm curious.
Any other question, comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, add number three. Town Council approval of the final plat of application number twenty twenty-two twenty-six oh nine, tract subdivision, property owner, Mason and Magnolia, and this is then the, the, partial number eight zero eight three north twenty-four twenty-three eighty dash zero zero five one dash zero zero three oh.
Mr. Murphy, want me to explain the item?
Yes, please.
Okay, this was a, this is the final plat for the, the tract subdivision, and the preliminary plat was approved by you in December. When the preliminary plat, it was six lots, and now, because after he did his review of infrastructure, and I noticed that back there it says preliminary plat, but it's just a final replat, he realized that the infrastructure was more costly than he wanted it to, so he changed it to four lots, which would, which allowed him to connect existing water and sewer lines with no extension cost. And there's no cost, the, we've had our survey and review it related to meeting chapter one seventy-seven. He's gotten all his signatures except for the ones that have to be approved after, if you approve it tonight. And so, we're just asking you to approve the plat, allow for the signatures, he will pay, make sure he pay, he will be required to pay for any consultant review fees to the town, and he'll pay for all the water, sewer, drainage to serve the lot. And Mr. Ritchie has reviewed these for the infrastructure improvements. I see him there. If you have any questions related to infrastructure.
I made a motion to approve it for her request. They recommended it, right? Y'all recommended this approval?
Yeah, yes, sir, I'm sorry, yes. They recommended approval, and, and it's the action to let the mayor, attorney, clerk sign it, sign the, the, the plat.
Have a motion, second. Any other question?
I do.
Yes.
We're doing the same thing over again. We're not following our code. Christian, have you reviewed a preliminary plat, and have we approved a preliminary plat with four lots? Because the one that was approved back in December is six lots, and we have not seen a proposal for four lots.
We discussed this a few months ago, and so I was, my recollection was refreshed when I discussed it with Land Use Administrator. You're correct, the preliminary plat was approved for six lots, and then the question became, does it need to come back to the Town Council when it's reduced to four? I don't believe the answer is yes.
Well, I do, because we, I'm sorry, but we discussed this before, that we wanted all the preliminary plaques to come back to us. But regardless of that, the, there's no water and sewer is existing on there. I don't, I don't know how you signed off on it to approve it when it goes against our code, but it doesn't have everything that we required Mr. Bennett either to, to suffice our code, because the existing of the water and sewer is not on there. We don't have any water sewer drawings for the final plat. I mean, that's, you know, for the final plat approval, but I'm on the preliminary plat situation still.
Yeah, the preliminary plat's long gone. I think that when it was approved, that means that if there's things that need to be changed, or if there are things that need to be reviewed, then it changes before it gets to the final plat. There is no requirement in the code that every time there's a change on the preliminary plat, that it comes back to the Town Council.
But there was no recommendations from the Town Council when we voted on it.
Exactly, and so, when it was changed-
So, we approved it as six lots, we didn't approve it whenever, it's totally different. Like, they should have amended their application and sent it back through the process.
I disagree. I think that the correct, if the Town Council doesn't approve it at four lots, the method would be to reject it at this point, and then it would go back through the process.
Well, regardless, it needed to go back through the whole process if they're changing the plat.
It will if you reject it, but there are lots of occasions under which preliminary plaques go under changes, and then you move to the final plat stage, and it's the Town Council's pleasure at this point.
Okay, well, say we have this, these four lots here, why isn't the existing water and sewer and the topo requirements and everything that's listed in the preliminary plat section in our code, why is that not fulfilled like Mr. Bennett had to go through?
There was a, a change in, in the process midway, but the short answer to that is that the preliminary plat was already approved.
And that's what I was told also in Mr. Bennett's whole process, but we made him go back through it.
You did, you, you pointed it out when Mr. Bennetts came out, and then the Town Council decided to not approve it at the preliminary plat stage. It was not approved yet, and that's a big difference.
Correct, but we're, we're relying on staff recommendation, and it's still, our staff is not following code.
The, the Town Engineer, Public Works Director, they are all satisfied with the infrastructure, and it's been presented to the Town Council for its consideration. If the Town Council wants to reject it, they can.
Whereas the Town Engineer comments, I have not seen one word from him in these documentation.
I do know that he's reviewed it and approved it. Ms. Fleet, can you hear the conversation?
Yeah, yes, and I was just trying to pull up my emails, as respect. They, and this, and there is a site, he did apply for the, the application initially with comments that came back from our engineer for the six lots, and there, he, Mr. Bennett felt they were too extensive what the improvements he would have to make for the six lot, so then he re, so he asked, would he have to go back through the process, and we, between the Town Attorney, Town Engineer, Public Works, we discussed it, felt, as you just stated, that it did not have to go back through the entire process. And then he presented a plan for engineering work, which the, was signed off by the engineer, and I am trying, that, that's what I was, hold on, I can pay the date of work. By our, Richie, do you, Richie, can you come to Puddy McExplain that you have seen this plan and you know what it is for the councilwoman, please?
I understand, but like-
As I look forward.
Ms. Fleet, I understand the Public Works Director has reviewed it, but we don't have any documentation from the engineer, and that's what our code says, that we have to have the Town Engineer approve it, and also the water sewer drawings for us to review too before we accept the final plat.
Okay, and, and that's what I'm trying to find. He had, I'm trying to find my email. But my understanding, Richie, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no extension, he's just hooking to existing water and sewer. Am I correct?
Yes. Four laterals, there's a six inch PVC line on the-
I can't hear Richie, he's got his mic on.
You gotta turn it on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He has four laterals on the railroad street side, it's a six inch PVC line, and on the Oxford side, it's a two inch PVC line, water line.
I personally don't want to accept anything until I see something from the Town Engineer, and I would like to see the preliminary plat process, and actually, this final plat doesn't have everything on it either. Just has drawn in the, I guess, the proposed, but it's not even by an engineer, it's just handwritten. Because, I mean, I don't want to fall back into what we went through with Mr. Bennett, and there were upgrades that were needed after the fact, and I don't want to make that mistake again. And I don't, I don't really think that we should rely on staff recommendation either until we get the subdivision code straightened out, because there's been too many mistakes.
Okay, any other comment?
Okay, we got a motion, second on floor, so we will put it, so, 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 question, because we originally approved the preliminary, we can't approve the final?
Well, first of all, you know, my general policy is not to tell you what you can and can't do.
But we don't have to make them go back and redo the, just as each strength-
It's my opinion you don't have to, Councilwoman Bishop disagrees, and so you have a choice to make.
See, this is already dragged out for like fifteen months.
I, in my experience, this happens very customarily between the point that the preliminary plat is approved and when a final plat is approved. So if you don't like what you see on the final plat, you can reject it. For example, the preliminary plat did have six, six lots. If you don't think that's appropriate, you still have an opportunity to reject it, the change to four. Staff doesn't see a reason why you would, either does Public Works, either does the Town Engineer.
It's, we can, if, if the council would like to, I mean, I can, we can provide all those emails and the sign off. I mean, I just sent Lisa one of those sign offs, but, but I don't know if she can get it, and you could defer it, that's another option instead of rejecting it. But it, he did get his approval, I think it was in November, Lisa, am I correct? His preliminary plat?
December second, I believe it was.
Yeah, and this is what happens in a preliminary final, when they have, find out what the engineering requirements are, they sometimes change it, which is what Mr. Buchanan did.
Meanwhile, since we went through the whole Bennett thing-
So it hadn't, it's only really been six months, which is what it took him to figure out the engineering and figure out what he was gonna do. But this was sent to the, but both of them were sent, both plans were sent to the engineer, the six lot plan and the four lot plan.
Want your comment?
Okay, I, I have a-
I feel like I should have learned from Mr. Bennett's process and notified them that their plat is not up to code two, especially since they change, were making changes on it. Why wasn't that recommended?
Excuse me, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Why wasn't this plat recommended when they changed it from six lots to four lots to go ahead and comply with our code like it needed to be from the, from the get-go? We, we just didn't catch it. Whenever he came up here to the council and asked for preliminary plat approval, we were relying on your staff recommendation, and it was not up to code then either. So why in the process that, Mr. Bennetts, we should have learned from it and made him do it since he was changing the plat anyways?
When he submitted the preliminary plat, he, he did have the engineering information. What had happened is, in April, after he found out what he had to do in dealing with his engineer and the costs, he decided not to. So then he came back with and asked that reduces to four lot, and that, at that time, I submitted it, I asked the, the Town Engineer, because I think that was a time that he was responsible for plots, and he said they did not have to go back through, they could go to final. But I do have an email that says, based done, that, from Kellen, from Mid Tower, basically, these water and sewer connections should be acceptable from the design standpoint with a picture of the, the, the plat. So, that, like I said, we have that backup, but I, but if you want to have copies of it before you approve the plat, that's, we can provide it, all the information we have on the engineering.
Yes.
Or if you want to go back to preliminary plat, it's really up to you.
Well, both, I mean, that would be great to have the Town Engineer drawings for us to review and the approval, because that's what our code says. Our code says we can't approve it until we have them.
Okay, I'll give you, if you want to withdraw all your motions, second, we'll do that table, if not, we'll go ahead and proceed by the others.
Who made the motion? I did.
What's your, Zed?
I'll pull my second.
And you second it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll pull my second.
Is there anything that you want to save down?
So, bring me up to speed, what's happening? Because there's no motion on the table at this point, right?
Yeah, there's a motion.
There is a motion.
Yeah, I made the motion.
This is discussion now, Ben.
The motion is to approve it.
Okay.
There's discussion.
I don't have a whole lot to say, other than, you know, my effort has been one to comply with the requests that were made and that kind of thing. My apologies that may be all the information in front of you right now, but I can tell you, on the grading and drainage stuff, and I don't have code, code citations or any of that stuff, but Kellen basically deferred these things to Kellen at Mid Tower, to Florida Building Code that says that I, as the contractor, and through your permitting department, there's a responsibility to maintain positive drainage away from houses, that kind of thing. Think there was an inference that because there's an existing city swale, obviously, the effort needs to be made to get our stormwater to that swale. Like I said, I, my understanding was that, that really is a detail that gets addressed on a lot-by-lot basis through construction. But there was a topo done to the grid size that staff asked for, presented. As far as water and sewer design, I'm not sure what we would show as a design, because all we're doing is tapping existing lines. And that would obviously be determined by house layout per site, you know, you know, none of that, that information's really nailed down, but our tie-ins are, I mean, what's gonna be new construction is gonna be from the property line to a new construction project. There's, that's why we've gone from six to four, because in their first review, Mid Tower said, basically, they would defer to the Public Works, Public Works Department for design and approval of the infrastructure improvements. We then were told, well, you gotta have that done by an engineer. We did. The engineered design that was originally proposed went to everybody. Public Works Director, literally by eight-thirty the following morning, had made a call to me and said, man, that looks good, it looks overdone, if anything, this, that. Mid Tower then thirty days later, came back with this laundry list after they had deferred to Public Works for the design, this list of, well, you need to open up the road in the middle of the block and put a manhole in, and you gotta have a uphill manhole, and you gotta put six, you gotta tie new six inch to existing two inch and all this stuff. That was gonna create approximately fifty thousand dollars extra cost, beyond what an engineer had already designed and what the Public Works Director was happy with on a design level. So, I mean, could stand here all night and gripe about timing and unanswered emails and all that stuff, but, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, I really feel like I've missed probably the best market in the last fifteen years. Now I gotta hope that you guys will approve something so I can get something going vertical there and, you know, I mean, not to poor mouth, but keep feeding my kids, you know, so, that's all I gotta say.
Ben, did you get engineer drawings for tapping in to the lateral, to submit to the Town Engineer, just to prove it and make sure there doesn't have to be fire hydrants and all that? That's what we ran into in the last one. Did you do that, when you, when you reduced it from six to four?
No, I wasn't asked to do that.
Okay, I think according to our code, you need that.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean-
But anyways, I did have one other question. The site clearing site work application, that's what we were provided on our iPads. I understand that, and I saw the note from Sarah, that y'all wanna start clearing and getting it prepped for the thing. What's holding you up there? Because-
I mean, really, just this process. I wasn't, I wasn't sure why-
Like, did you go before the zoning board already? Did you go before the zoning board with, for the site work clearing and everything?
No, no.
Because I saw-
So, in, I don't, figuring out what these dates are and everything, when, basically, when I recognized the fact that adding, so, so, there was a proposal for six lots. To do six lots was gonna cost me fifty thousand dollars more than doing four lots. Kind of my thought was, four lots that I can do something on are better than the concept of six, right? So, and, and, you know, when you're talking about, you know, houses in the mid-twos, you can't absorb twenty-five thousand dollars a lot in the, the dirt under a house on a city-sized lot. So I asked if amending the plat from six lots to four, which would then configure everything to be basically wet taps on existing infrastructure, would be recognized as an amendment to an application or be required to become a new application. I was told that the answer to keep wheels under this thing was to make a site clearing application. Amend the plat and make the site clearing application, drop off a three hundred dollar check, and we'll keep this thing moving. So, no, nothing, on the site clearing application level, there's been no administration beyond May or June or whenever that was, done on that level. I mean, the money's been paid, you know, and then, and then I've even asked like, okay, so, I got four lots, site clearing application's supposed to be a hundred dollars a lot, I think I paid three hundred, like, what did that cover and what's been done because I paid three hundred dollars? You know, I mean, this process is just super, super cumbersome, you know, and, you know, I'm not here to point fingers, but, you know, I mean, probably the best thing to save face with business owners and operators in the community might be like a moratorium where guys like me will quit going out and writing checks for crap that we can't do anything with for the next thirteen months, because there's a combativeness between departments and councils and, and, and that kind of stuff. So, you know, that's just a recommendation, but yeah, I mean, I don't think you could have enough workshops between now and twenty twenty-five to create enough clarity to make this process one that's enjoyable. I'm, I'm done.
And I don't necessarily agree with what you're saying there, Ben, because you changed your application, we didn't change your application, you changed your application, so, to go from six houses to four houses. So, that, that part is definitely on you, that time difference in whatever it takes to make that happen is definitely on you, not the town.
Right, but you've got an engineer that said, let Richie review the engineer drawings that, that, that I went from scratch and produced in a matter of days, and then your engineer, because they're given this amount of time, literally let it sit on the corner of the desk for twenty-nine days, and on the thirtieth, put the two hours worth of work that it would have taken a month ago into it and sent this thing that tripled my budget. After they had deferred the authority over the installation of new infrastructure to the Public Works Department. So, that's why we went from six to four, because, like I said, if I can start doing something on four lots tomorrow, it's a hell of a lot better than not being able to do anything over there.
I, I agree with that. I'm just saying, I, I still think some of this time you have to take on yourself is what I'm, all I'm saying by that, not necessarily on the town. Now, that being said, I do feel like that you turn in a preliminary plat with six lots, you drop it down to four lots, that takes less infrastructure to do that, you're gonna be working off the existing infrastructure. You're going to be working off the existing infrastructure. The attorney thinks that you should be able to move on forward with that, as far as he's concerned by the code. And I do too. Because now, because Richie is involved this time and wasn't involved the last time, I think makes a huge difference. But I, I still think that some of that time you have to own, and, and not just you, it's, it's everybody. Because you come in and, and they ask, what's it going to take to do this? But now, you got to make sure the numbers work out. And I, I understand that, I totally understand that. But some of that you have to take on yourself.
Right, right.
That's all I was saying.
So, so, and, and, and I will, you know, like I said, I'm done developing land. Like, it's out of my lane, you know what I mean? You see something, you see something that you feel like you can make something nice out of, and, and you, and you take a stab at it. I'm not near as good at plating land as I am swinging a hammer, you know what I'm saying? But, but, if we can just get back to Ms. Bishop's point, I don't know who I am to provide you a wet tap detail that your Public Works Department is going to perform. But if you need one, go back to the engineering for the six lots and pull the detail. I mean, everything was detailed as far as taps and that kind of stuff. I mean, you know, that's a pretty standard detail, and the fact that there are four of them now rather than six doesn't change the way that, you know, the line gets kinked and the die gets stuck in it, and you know what I mean?
Well, a lot of the problems with Mr. Bennett is Richie wasn't involved in that. And that, that was, there was things that got found out afterwards that, and, and so-
Well, we were also told that Richie was involved.
Well.
Because I asked Richie in a meeting, a public meeting, if he was in connection with him, and he said yes. So, I, I don't know how, not going back to that as another cannon worship, I don't know how that even happened, but-
Well, and then, and, and let me just tell you this, because it's something I experienced. And, you know, I mean, this is home to me, this is home to y'all. If we don't make it better, then what are we doing, right? So, I was, I was sent out of the last meeting saying, you need to provide us with engineer drawings. So, I reached out to the Public Works Director, who was then scratching his head about, because I asked the Land Use Administrator, okay, if, if I need to provide engineer drawings to tie into what's existing underground, I need it mapped out, you know? I mean, nobody can, can stand on top of the ground over there and go, well, let's, let's dig a hole here and start something and just go that way till, you know what I mean? So, then, we tasked Richie with, we need this thing mapped out, we need manhole depths and this kind of stuff. And his concern was, if he was over there popping lids on manholes and figuring things out that haven't been mapped, how's he going to account for the time that his department spent?
We have a process for that now, since then.
Perfect, great, you know what I mean? Because, yeah, that's, you know, I mean, I felt like it kind of put him in a bind, right? Like, he's sitting here going-
We have a process for that now.
So, yeah, and like I said, I mean, as bad as it sucks, you know, that there's not a process for everything, and everything's not real clear and that kind of thing. I hate the thought of not being able to get something going over there, but, yeah, in the future, you know, I mean, I've, I've just seen a lot of things get proposed and, well, there's, you know, I don't know. I don't think that the intent of the code is being enforced maybe on every occasion the same, and it, it just, you know, this is the second one of these things I've done in the last 18 months, and-
I agree, and that's why we're trying to make it the same.
This process didn't feel like the last process, you know what I mean? And I'm going, man, this ought to be a matter of-
It, it really is laid out.
Make an application, and here are the steps.
I understand your frustration, Ben, I really do. I've personally gone through it before. But that's why I'm trying to make it, I mean, it's in our code, it's laid out. I didn't have near as problem as you did and Mr. Bennett did, because I was provided what I needed to follow the code. And I just gave it to the engineer, had him do it. But things have changed since then. And we're relying on different staff and staff recommendations and stuff. And we're trying to, we're trying to make this process better. It's really not, it's really not that hard if you just follow the code, but I know our staff has to administer the code clearly to the public. And that's where the frustration sets in for a lot of people, not only builders, but even customers. And I, I do agree with you, I, I, 100%. But what we do for one person, we have to do the same for all. And that's what I was just pointing out, was that the planning process, we, we didn't follow our code with this one. But as far as you doing your site work, I noticed on here that you wanted to remove fencing, clear necessary trees, bring and fill dirt. You, you paid the site work application fee, I don't see no holdup in that. So, that's why I was asking if you went before the zoning board and got approved, and then just, you know, go at it while this process has been taking so long.
No, I don't know the steps in the process, other than what I'm advised when I ask questions. And the question was, how do we, how do we keep this thing moving as an application to subdivide into four lots rather than six? And the answer was, we'll go ahead and do the site clearing application and, and we'll keep it moving. But, no, I don't, I don't know that that application's been heard by the board or, or any of that stuff.
Okay, Ben, we're going, we're going to go ahead and proceed on with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, please, if you would-
Hang on a second, because I'm not sure Jared didn't remove this.
He did.
And I'll second, I'll second Lee's motion.
Well, I thought you said you stayed in. Okay, you go ahead, okay, alright, I got it. Alright, Kenny, you second it.
Yes, sir.
Right, Lee made the motion. Alright, now, let me call it over.
Councilman Pickett?
Yes.
Councilman Walnuts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Council President Beasley?
Yes. So, Karen, you want to go? But I do understand Kelly's frustration, I don't want to have to be misunderstood.
Well, this is something else that we need to work on in the future. I mean, this misunderstanding thing that's going on, you know, everybody's on the same level. Or the same line, maybe.
The, the problem with it is, is every situation is that much different too.
Yeah.
That's, but, but, that's still something we can improve on, there's no doubt.
Okay, let's move on to item number four. Town Council discussed the site work, uh, uh, site work, site clearing, and application permit fee refunds. John, I believe?
Yeah, this, this came up because a homeowner in town had three loads of dirt and was going to spread it out in his yard, do some landscaping. And he was cited that he needed to get a permit. Well, he came up here to get a permit, and it cost him $100 to do a permit. And, you know, I don't think it's been the intent of the council to put, you know, residents in that kind of bind, whenever they're just doing some, some yard work, some landscaping. So, and I know that it's something that we've talked about in our LDR discussions, but I did, I did put it on this agenda item last time. And Myra did some research on it with the help of Dale to find out how many people this would affect, or how many people this has affected this permit fee. And going back, it's only affected two people. Um, there's a third that was being cited by Dale, but I don't know if they've come up and, and done their, pulled a permit or not. But, again, I don't think it was the intent of the council to handicap homeowners to do some landscaping. This isn't site prep, you know, they're not building. This is just landscaping, putting some, put some dirt, filling some holes in their, in their yard. So, I want to make a motion to approve the refund for the two people that we know have paid that $100 deposit or a $100 permit fee.
I'll second it.
So, what are we doing in the meantime?
Well, we're still with the LDRs, we're looking at those. In, in the meantime, I mean, it'd be on a case-by-case if somebody comes up here that that's all they're going to do is, is do some, some landscaping. That's totally different in my eyes than somebody doing site prep, wanting to build something.
I think you also could give guidance to code enforcement on what you as a town council think the policy should be.
It's, it's also got to do with the fact that when you're talking about somebody that's in an existing home place, or, you know, homes, not a, not a site, but on, on a piece of land that somebody's residing on.
Right.
I mean-
So, what, what's the difference in a, I mean, we have property owners. So, if you refund an individual, why not refund everybody? I mean, what is even the intent of this? People have property that they don't want to build on, that they just want to keep up, fill it in, they can put flowers on it, whatever they want.
Well, there's nobody been, nobody has done those.
All of these, all of these people that made the application, all the rest of the people.
And you, that, that shows that they're going to put a flower bed?
Well, that shouldn't matter to us, it's property rights. I mean, what you want to do with your property, you won't, it's property rights.
We discussed this in a workshop.
So, property owners are, I mean, why even have, I mean, if y'all want to do away with that, I don't even see a problem with somebody bringing filter on their property. Um, and I don't really know the intent of why we even have this in effect and for someone to pay for it. Because it's just some people that want to clear up their property, bring in dirt. For a building permit, you can do that anyways. But for those property owners that don't want to build on their property, but yet want to fix it up and get it maybe prepared for a future build-
That's site prep.
Your code doesn't differentiate-
It doesn't.
Your, but that's the thing, your code says any, I mean, like, any. And so, that's why code enforcement honestly applied the law correctly. And now, it's a little bit of a bind, because that is not your intent. I mean, how could it be your intent? Um, but-
It was to stop people from building up their property and shedding it on other people's property though. If they came in and built their property up. If you were just going to come in and put a flower bed, and flower bedding might not be the word.
But why can't you still cite the people that do that? Why do you have to have an application and a fee?
Say that again, Al.
Why can't you just cite the people that do that? Why do you have to have an application, a fee?
Well, that, I think that's his intent, is to stop that. There ain't going to be a, a fee if you want to go in and just fill in your yard or not build your yard up, just work on your yard. Right now, the way it is, if you haul two loads in there, you got to go pay that fee and get a permit. You shouldn't have to do that for a couple loads of dirt.
Well, I mean, going back to like, if you want to clear trees or make your property, get it ready for a future build, like down the road, future years, I mean, what's the difference?
That's site prep.
Yeah, but what's so wrong about site prep is their property.
But there's a difference between somebody that has a house that has some whole, because right now, I've got some, some, I could take a load or two of dirt, you wouldn't even be able to tell it. But in our current format, I would have to come up here and get a permit and pay $100. I, I don't think that that is our intent, is for somebody that has a house that's just trying to do some landscaping, they're not doing site prep to build something, it's just some landscaping.
But if you're going to build something, you're going to have a building permit. So, I'm just saying, what's so wrong if they own the property, if you're taking away the property rights if, if they just want to have a vacant piece of land?
Well, this, this-
So, if you refund one person, you should refund everybody or do away with the whole thing altogether.
No, I don't, I don't see it that way.
Okay.
Y'all are the ones that voted on this.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we need to bring this back and revisit it. And I just spoke to the attorney, and he agrees with me on that, so. These two that y'all brought up, I'm in favor of doing it under the circumstances. Uh, you know, until we come up to, uh, if we're going to work it that way, or if we're going to work it like everybody, you know? And this is something else we can do in the future, too. A little bit.
Well, just to be clear, Mayor, what I, what I was suggesting is that, you know, if this doesn't, if the law that we have doesn't reflect the intent, it should be amended. It could be, you know, it's got to be.
But we need- We did do that in the LDRs already.
Okay.
It's coming, it's being done.
Yeah, I know.
It's still making better defining. It may still be better defining in the actual LDRs than what we currently put in there. I mean, question is, do we, do we table this until we clean it up a little bit and address it?
Probably, because we did discuss, that's, that's where I was going with this. We just all-
Pretty much, that's not passed yet. Right. And that hasn't passed, we're still operating under the old codes. I mean, is it better to table it and address it once we get this figured out? And maybe define it a little better, so we have better guidelines for code enforcement to go on.
I think it's, I think it's pretty defined in what we did the other day. But that's not past yet. That's not past yet, I know, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
I think it's pretty defined.
And readdress it further down the road, I mean, there's a motion to second before.
Well, I, I know we discussed it, and, and this was brought up, that, you know, that, you know, someone getting two loads to fill in a hole or level it, the ground out, was somewhat different than someone building up and making work to run on somebody else's. We discussed that, but, you know, I put it out on Facebook, you know?
Well, we, we discussed it again the other night, I think you weren't at that meeting.
No, we discussed it again, so.
Oh, did you?
Yes, sir. And, and that's why I say, but, but it's still, that's something that's coming, it's still not passed yet.
Right.
So, I, I will, I withdraw my motion. And, uh, I'll withdraw my second. I thought I did.
No, I did, but I withdraw it.
I thought I did.
I thought you, Lee, seconded. I made the motion, you seconded.
Right. And I will, I will withdraw that for us to have the, we, once we iron that all out.
Alright, you withdraw, and you're, to table it, I will. To table it?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion as long as we table it, because I don't want this to go off the, off of the agenda, because I want to revisit this to offer those residents, those homeowners, that their refund for just wanting to do some landscaping.
I'll second your motion.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Okay, so, uh, who was that second?
I'm Jared, Jared.
You, you out, okay. Alright, so we have a motion and second to table it.
To table it, to when?
To when.
Let the LDRs are done.
It's almost until you-
Well, I guess till the LDRs are done, and we've got it on the agenda to, to set some more LDRs, which, how many more LDRs do you think we're going to have to have to, before we're finished? Because we've already had like five of them, or both of y'all.
When we get done.
I don't think.
I think we all need to be here, though.
Yes. Um, I, I'll table, but, what is, what is that, first of September?
Table until the-
I'll ta, I'll table it, well, we want to have, how many LDRs in?
No, I said, do you want me to write table until the LDRs are adopted?
There you go.
Because we got a budget coming up too, so.
So, I can agree with that?
Yes, sir.
There.
Okay.
Alright.
Skip, did you want to?
If you're going to table it, no, but yes, I, I would have gotten up if we had a comment.
Do you want me to call the law?
Yeah, I'll call.
Councilman Walnuts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Pickett?
Yes.
Council President Beasley?
Yes.
Okay, Karen, you know, Mr. Lee. Alright, let's move on to item five. Town Council approval to set budget workshop for September 6th or the 8th at 6 o'clock to discuss department revenues and operating capital expenditures to establish a budget for the 22, 23 fiscal year, five-year dividend plan.
Motion to set a budget workshop for the 6th or the 8th, I'll let you all decide.
6th works for me.
6th works for me.
6th or 8th?
6th.
That's next Tuesday.
The 6th at 6 o'clock, that's a great decision, buddy.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, in discussion.
I just want to say one thing. I will send out that workshop agenda with the budget and the five-year capital plan following this meeting, so you all have it all weekend to, all everyday weekend to review.
Okay. All in favor, aye? All opposed? So, Karen. Item number 6, Town Council on set additional joint workshop to review and discuss the proposal amendment to the zoning and- proposal amendment to the zoning and planning development regulations.
You got any ideas, Lisa?
This is the one that you want Janice at, so I would suggest, what about if we do it on a Tuesday before the zoning meeting? That way, since it's joint, she'll already be here, they'll, they'll be here.
The zoning meeting will be the thirteenth?
Of this month, and then I think it's the twelfth of October.
Okay, with that.
Eleven.
Eleven, excuse me.
Or whatever they are, yeah, I'm okay.
So you want to do, um, what did I just say, thirteen?
Thirteen.
And ten, eleven, if that's good with you, too, Janice, and we'll have them both at six o'clock?
Yeah, yes, yes, and I'm gonna try to get it where we have specific things to go over, so we can get it, get these things done.
Agreed.
Send a motion, John?
John, yes.
Second.
Second. Okay, and discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Item number seven, town council establish and process to close, abandon, and, uh, vacate, uh, street alleys, easements, and right-of-ways within the town.
Now, this one, I know that you want to have Christian and Janice, but I would rather have.
Can we put it first meeting in October?
No, I would rather have it, well, it's, if we could get the attorney here at six o'clock before our first meeting, if either September, October, then, yeah, I would say, let's do it then.
If, if, if everybody's in agreement at six o'clock, October sixth?
October what?
Sixth, I believe it's the first meeting.
That is the first meeting in October. October, yeah, ten-six.
Six o'clock.
Is that okay with you, counselor?
Yes.
And you want that to also be a joint workshop, or do you want it to be just a?
No, joint workshop with the zoning board, I, I would love the zoning board's input on it as well.
Okay, I just am asking, and that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, second. Any question, comment? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry. Okay, item number eight.
Motion to approve the minutes. We'll speak this in a moment. Motion to approve the minutes.
All right, have a motion, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry. Item number, town council approval of AECOM payable through July twenty-nine, twenty-two, uh, project name, uh, Edge Lightning Science Wind Cones, uh, at the airport, uh, in amount of five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, fifty cents.
Motion to approve, second.
Question, comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Item number ten, town council approval of Chad Brock Enterprise, uh, final payment, uh, for July nineteenth, twenty-two, uh, and this for runway maintenance and improvement at the airport of, uh, three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Item left, town council approval of Dixon Tree and Lawn Service payable for mowing number six, uh, through August twenty-second, twenty, uh, year twenty-two, uh, this mowing right-of-ways amount of eight, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second with a question. Richie, is he doing, i- has he done everything that you've asked him to do on this mowing?
Yes, he has.
Okay. Okay, is there another question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Okay, item number, town council approval of office resource, uh, Jackson LLC payable, uh, for fifty percent down, project name is Town Hall, uh, in amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. This is capital.
Motion to approve, because they've already got half the front office to help anyway, so.
Second. Okay, have a motion, second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Okay, move on to, uh, item number thirteen, town council approval of TCA, uh, electrical contractor, uh, payable, uh, payable for page number two, uh, through June the tenth, uh, twenty-two, and this is for, uh, the airport, just two, also, mining, area signs, calling it, uh, the airport, twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion to approve, panel.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry. All right, item number fourteen, Lisa, I believe that was.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'll go ahead and let Christian read the title to the resolution first.
And you've heard this before, since you've approved it before, but, um, resolution number twenty-two-two dash eleven, resolution of the town council of the town of Hilliard, Florida, a municipal corporation, authorizing a submission of an application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, FERDAP, to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for federal fiscal year twenty-two-three to twenty-two-four.
Okay, and what this is, is we adopted this resolution at our last meeting on the eighteenth of August with an additional item number three. Item number three stated that the town will amend, um, its capital improvement element to include the development of the North Oxford Park Phase Two if the project is funded in the twenty-three, twenty-four application cycle. And when I pulled the capital improvement element that was approved at last year's budget adoption, it already had this part listed in it, and so therefore, that's not, that's not something we need to do, we've already done.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two dash eleven.
Second.
Any questions?
Actually, I would ask, um, council president, that it, as part of your motion, that it supersede the resolution you passed last week?
So, go. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Kerry, there. Okay. Go back to the audience comment.
Michael Beach, hold up.
Michael, Michael Franklin, one-five-one-zero-one-two, County Road one-oh-eight. Um, I'm sitting here looking, and I'm just shaking my head, thinking, why, here y'all go again, y'all pass the plat without it being to code, not following our code. So I just wanted to make that clear. Here you did it again, so, thank you.
Okay, Richie. Um, I just, I know about a year and a half ago, Ben came to us, and it took about a week, and we worked up a plan, and, uh, he was gonna do an easement and everything. I don't know what happened to all that plan, uh, but I also know that I don't mind. I mean, he said that it, that I shouldn't, you know, I was, that it was told that it's not our job to go around and look at our facilities, and I disagree totally. I know that it is my job, and when I research a facility, I learn more about it. So Public Works has no problem researching our infrastructure. And number three, the big difference between the Ralph Bennett property and this one over here is that was galvanized two-inch, this is PVC two-inch, which we tie PVC two-inch all the time. It's not our big issue. So I saw no red flags on this, and the reason really there's no plan drawn for the four houses is because really he's got laterals popping out at all of them, and it's just a tap out to the street, so he really wouldn't need that. I don't know what all happened, I really don't. We're talking about four houses, so.
We're just trying to make it the same.
I know, it, it really, it seems way more difficult than it should have been.
It's required on the, it's required by code, you know, but that's what's required, so how hard is it for him to put that job, those jobs on the platform, council to approve?
Nobody can hear.
I can't hear you.
No, it's not that nobody can see it, because these are recorded meetings. Nobody can hear.
Well, I just wanted to make my point about, and I, I tend to, I mean, it would be easy if, if we look at it, and if we have to spend two or three weeks figuring out things, and maybe go back, we say, well, there's problems. But majority of the stuff, probably eighty-five percent of stuff, we could look at and get it, figure the thing out, and come up with a pretty good idea, and then go on to the plats with it. But, um, like, I don't understand this one over here totally, because we kind of had something worked out at, a year and a half ago, and, and it's like, well, then, well, Richie shows up, well, yeah, we show up, I've got little stick drawings, everything, I had depths, I got where the laterals are and everything, but it's like, you know, I don't know if anybody listened to me. Thank you, Richie. Thank you, Richie. Okay, and what else I can speak? Okay, not, um, go to the council. Lee?
Uh, just keep Mr. Whitberg in your prayers, and that's, that's it.
Kerry?
Nothing, I got it.
Okay. Kenny?
No, sir.
Carrie?
I would like to say I'm thankful that nobody was injured in that plane crash on Eastwood. Um, I think it was a seventy-year-old man, is what I heard.
Was he that old? I didn't hear of that.
Yeah, and he was very fortunate to live, and God was definitely looking after him. Um, and nobody was hurt, and none of the homeowners or anything were hurt, so, um, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Don?
Just one thing real quick, uh, thanks, Dawn, in the papers for putting that article about Alicia, that was, uh, real nice, thank you.
Okay, uh, one thing I have is, uh, we have September fifteenth, uh, public period of regular meetings, uh, and, uh, this has to do with the tram and the budget, and also, so, uh, and September the sixth is a workshop, joint workshop, I believe it is.
Um, yes, sir, both are joint, one was, uh, okay, first, September sixth is just council, the thirteenth and the ten-eleven are joint, and then ten-sixth.
Right. I don't think they'll ever let me sign anything.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay?
No, sir, good, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Richie, you got anything else?
Other.
Okay, Lisa.
I just have one thing, um, and I feel really bad that I didn't bring this up at the last meeting, but we need to set a hack meeting for Veterans Day for November, something you like, for November fifth, um, Mr. Bobby Franklin, who came to me and advised that he's gonna be, have a town, but that we're more than welcome to use the facility, um, but we do need to set a meeting, because November fifth is the Saturday prior to Veterans Day, and that's moving up quickly, so we'll need to get everything ordered, and also we'll need some sort of planning meeting, what would you all, what would you like to do? I know that you're, it's just up now.
I'm, I'm on the count, okay.
No, you don't need to go there.
Um.
Even told me to have a few one, Bobby, I have one, uh, are you wanting to know a Monday date, or a, how about maybe prior to the council meeting on the twentieth of October, or, excuse me, the fifteenth of September?
Oh, yeah, but that's, that is. Um, let's try to do.
Monday, six o'clock on the fifteenth?
Of?
September.
You want to do it that early?
I need to get up, doing it early, because things have to go on.
Yeah, 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 let's do it, so we don't have to do it during, oh, during, oh, meeting week.
Okay, at six o'clock.
Six o'clock on the fifteenth.
Anybody that would like to join us, it will be here at six o'clock.
Yes.
On the fifteenth.
You could be members of the hat.
You come, and you will, you come, and you will be a member.
You're, you'll be a hat.
Anything else, please?
Okay, Mr. Turner. Um, are you looking forward to joining us, fun? Enjoyed that? Um, um, I have nothing for the town.
Do you want to say anything about Leanne joining the zoning board?